Welcome, everyone, to this, I don't know what kind of a night it is, but hopefully it doesn't rain tonight in the Village Hall.
It's good.
I was asked to have a moment of silence for this young lady in Long Grove, resident Ellie Kim, who died in that voting act last week. Just pause for a second. Unfortunate and very sad. Keep us moving here, we have homeowners associations on the agenda tonight. The Fairfield Village, Athena, I should know how to say her name. She comes to all the meetings. Athena, are you here anywhere or online? Okay. What about Hearings Landing Glen Nelson? I know they were all invited. They're not here. So that moves us to public comment. Any public comment in the room? Go ahead, Helen.
I'm here as your average citizen with a concern about the publications relating to trustee meeting. Whether you know or do not know, right now, the only publication that is on the website for this meeting is the Agenda. When we, I've been a citizen here for many years, and over the years, we have had most of the documents that are presented for you, certainly not anything that's confidential, not any of the financials, but reports from the planners. Over the last several months, slowly, they have stopped putting anything on the site except the Agenda was the last thing. And I was told, well, we're meeting all requirements, and if you want any information, submit a FOIA request. I think this is just wrong. We're not Chicago. We're not Great Lakes. We're not any other large community. We have in the past supplied as citizens with the information of what is going to happen at a meeting, including the planners' report, including copies of proposed ordinances, everything except the very things that you don't want everyone to know, the financials, that sort of thing. I'm here to issue a complaint because I don't think this is right. And being told that it meets legal requirements without knowing, I don't know what legal requirements is meaning. I know that as a village, we have been open and above board with each other about what is going to happen at meetings. And I think that this should continue. And simply because we have new employees does not mean that everything has to change in what we're doing.
Thank you for your feedback. I would ask Vic or Chris, maybe Chris to respond first, right?
Yeah, I did respond to Helen's request, and there's a lot of information pertaining to the agenda materials that are in draft form and discussed in the Village Board. They're meant for the Village Board to aid in their discussion during board meetings. And if they're up on the website, then they've changed substantially because of a board discussion that could cause confusion, more confusion to the public than posting it to be not posting it. So we are meeting all of the statutory requirements. I can let Vic touch on that.
In terms of the statute, the only that's required would be the Agenda. That's what the Open Meetings Act says. There are a few instances where public hearings are involved that materials have to be made available, but otherwise, this is a, you know, it's a policy question as to what's provided. I will note, because I get my information directly from the Village and not from the website, I will note when I checked the website recently and I saw some of the materials on there, many of those materials had information that would not be available under FOIA. And that presents its own problem. So, you know, I will let the Village Board decide what it wants to make available, but certainly to ensure that we are not releasing information that would otherwise be exempt under FOIA, essentially makes the process of putting together a packet, I won't say double the work, but it would certainly be more work for a very limited staff. And that's a question for the Village Board as to the extent to which you want to have staff devote additional energies to create this secondary public packet.
Now, I have an opinion that there's some things we should definitely publish, like the Treasurers Report and some simple things like that, right? But I do know that I have witnessed, you know, the minutes that have not been approved should not be published because they can change or they may be incorrect, right? So, and there's been, you know, some personal information up there that shouldn't have been up there. So I know those things are, need to be addressed. I, you know, obviously, I learned Helen from you and started asking questions because it started happening over the last-
Several weeks.
Several weeks, right? And I, you know, asked the question. So there's some legitimate concerns why Chris is doing that. I guess I would look for the board's feedback. I think we can put some things up there, obviously, but we, you know, need to be careful what goes up and gets posted. So. Makes sense?
I think previously, we posted excerpts, perhaps maybe is the best word, under different headings, not, you know, certainly not everything, not all, just, but, but like, whatever. So, I noticed on the website today that the PCZBA meetings are difficult to find, you know? So I think it's, that part is a website issue, but, yeah, that makes sense. I had, I had not thought about it previously.
I don't know if anyone has an opinion, you know, we'll just go ahead and bring it up right here because I still would like to see some stuff put up there. So it doesn't have to be nothing, but I understand the caution aspects of it too, right? There's some things that should not be up there.
And minutes, draft minutes have never been put up. That's not, that's not been edited.
I have.
Not that I see.
Yeah.
And not that I've downloaded.
Yeah.
But planners' reports have been up there. The ordinance has been put up there, and certainly if you're going to discuss an ordinance, then citizens have, should have the ability to see what it is you're going to discuss and to not put it up there. You know, so all of a sudden, make all these changes and give no explanation is just not appropriate.
Well, we're taking that advisement and we'll relax, we'll see what happens. All right, any more public comment? Benjamin, yes?
I'm Benjamin Matthew from 4269 O'Leary Community Homeowners Association. I have a question for Village Manager Bartman. It's my purpose understanding that the owners of 4269 O'Leary 22 have reached out to you and asked for a meeting. Have you set up a meeting with them and are you able to discuss what you discussed in that meeting?
We have not scheduled a meeting with them yet, so when we decide, we'll have more to report as to what happens, yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Nelson, representing the Hearings Landing homeowners association.
Oh, sorry, yep, yep. Did I skip over you or no?
I arrived two minutes late.
I see.
I'm sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, please, yep.
I just wanted to say on behalf of the neighborhood, thank you, everyone, for your board support as well as the administrative team here. And thank you for the help of the vacant home that we're trying to manage within our neighborhood and for lending us just engineering expertise to help us assess the situation of our roads. So thank you for that. I really don't complain.
Thanks for what you do. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Um, any other public comment in the room or online? All right, I take that as a no. Keith, you want to give us a public safety report?
We had a pretty uneventful strawberry fest. There were no problems. Everybody enjoyed it, had a good time. They did end up doing an emergency evacuation on Saturday night at eight thirty because of the storms. And it took about a half hour, forty minutes to evacuate everybody from the grounds, but everything went pretty, pretty much as planned. And everybody was out or inside the village tavern before the raid came.
Did they come back?
They, they, they were talking about waiting it out and reopening the fest, but then they just canceled it.
Oh.
Yeah, but it was at, you know, eight o'clock, eight, what, eight o'clock at night?
Eight thirty. They had to keep all the towns down because of the weather that was coming. It would have been too much for-
Well, and so I was telling Keith that my golf cart up in Wisconsin got smashed. The Abbey Springs where I have my place up there, the golf course is still closed. There's W R A trees down up there, seventy mile an hour straight line winds. They said Williams Bay had a tornado. I don't know.
Yeah, that's right over the border, like within thirty miles of the border?
Yeah, a little bit west, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there was rotation. I saw it on the radar.
Yeah, and then, and so I was like, oh, this is going to be a problem for the festival. And then it came here and it just came. It's an event. But it was bad up there.
Yeah, Jamesville.
Jamesville, and it's all close to that area and a little bit west, but just across the border, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you for the report. I guess that's, there's nobody else here, right? So we have the consent agenda. There's several items on it. The approval of the May 2024 Treasurers Report, approval of the special board meeting minutes that we had on June eighth, approve of the regular board meeting minutes from the June eleventh meeting. And then there's three executive session meeting minutes, May fourteenth, May twenty-eighth, and June eleventh. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Moved by trustee O'Connor.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. I know you're here tonight for the next item on the agenda, but this is consideration of an ordinance approving a preliminary plan unit development major amendment for White Oaks Plan Unit Development. We received an email right before the start of the meeting from the HOA asking us to defer the decision on this. And consulting with Vic, we might be wise to do that? He's nodding his head, so I don't know how-
Yeah, I mean, I think that the HOA has made a request, it sounded unreasonable one in the Village, certainly defer action on this. The matter was just recently approved or recommended for approval by the PCZBA and, you know, we'll have another meeting in, what, two weeks?
Two weeks, yeah.
So.
I mean-
And it might be worthwhile to certainly have the applicant and HOA representatives have a conversation so that any potential misunderstandings or, or issues can be ironed out.
It's unfortunate Helen just left. I was going to ask her if that didn't happen at the PCZBA.
Well, we, we have Jeff here, so if you want, Mr. Kazmer, you want to, what was the question you wanted to ask?
I just was curious if that discussion between the HOA and the petitioner had not taken place previously.
We did not speak with HOA Association at our meeting. We heard from some residents who had concerns over the water that was accumulating in ponds along the drainage ditches that already exist. And I think it was brought up that most of those problems are under the purview of the homeowners association and not anything to do with the applicant for this board. We did not speak with HOA Association.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Really up you off. You want to defer?
Sure.
Yes. Trustee Jamil?
I have to leave.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. I know you're all here, so thank you. Okay. All right, so we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the village code regarding liquor licenses, allowing a Class H application for the 3976 O'Leary 22, the Sorelli Italian Restaurant. From what I can tell, it sounds like it'll be a nice addition to our village. It's in the Long Grove Commons. It's at, where it was Fresh Wave-
It used to be Smoking Teas.
Yeah, no, is it Smoking Teas or it's the Fresh Wave Fish Restaurant?
It came after Smoking Teas.
Oh, is that in the same building?
Yes.
Okay, I thought they, I thought it was over.
You're taking both units.
Oh, taking both units, okay.
Smoking Teas, you know, had added smoking teas.
Got it.
Taken the whole thing. Great marketing to send, they sent with the pictures.
Yeah.
Like, done.
So, so this will have a small dining room so you can eat there.
No, there's no, no house dining.
No, there is.
He said, yeah, they're, they're-
There's no service.
Because there's a next item on the agenda.
There's no sit down.
Oh, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, but, but there's a lot of carryout, the liquor license, they're only going to sell wine, they're going to sell wine from Italy imported in. You can take it to go and so forth.
That's me, I have another question.
Is that you? Oh, it is you, okay.
Oh.
I thought you were, I thought you were, oh, that's, you're, you're also building the-
No, you were telling Helen to go and run it, who was, who was building it?
Oh, I see, okay, got it. So that's yours.
I'm opening Italian.
Your open Italian restaurant. Do you want to, you want to share anything more than that?
My, 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 my.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Repeating your email, thank you.
Yeah, so I figured I'd send some so everybody can kind of have an idea, because somebody says con aggression, it means a lot of things.
Yeah.
Very smart. Your picture's outstanding.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll have one of them.
I was trying to ask questions about why the liquor license over the weekend, and then I got more information about the packaged wine sales. And then your email, then I'm like, last night, I'm like-
I want to clarify, yeah.
They're like, well, what are you doing?
We're not selling hard whiskey, it's not a liquor story. So people will have food, but then if they want to take a nice bottle of wine and take it home, you know, that was kind of the point. But it's pretty much like a to-go concept, you know? These days, you call ahead for a restaurant and you want to take something to go, it's a twenty to thirty minute process. Our food is, when you guys come in, you'll see, we have a huge counter and all the food, like if you walk in Italy, it's all ready to go, it's ready. So we'll cut it, we'll prepare it, we'll warm it up for you if you want, or you can take it home and you can warm it up at home. It's very quick. So hopefully you grab some wine, grab some food, and, you know, you're on your way. You know, I live two minutes from there and bless my wife, she's fantastic, but not the greatest cook, and she goes driving by the place, it's been empty for a long time. So I figured I'd-
You know, this is being recorded. Hopefully she doesn't listen to the recording.
Oh, I'm watching. Excuse her. You know, but it's empty for a while and obviously I was training in Italy to cook, so I said, you know, let's kick up the food scene a little bit here, right?
What took you so long?
The supply. I know, sorry. But I'm here now.
You can't put, you can't put wine in some, like, mason jars to go?
Oh, I'll pack it in however you want. No problem. It's a real mason.
I don't know, as the liquor commissioner, I'm not sure that's legit.
I might not be legal about that.
Although, we still have some stuff, special containers that can still be used to take those things out, yeah.
If you have any other questions, you know, I'm here, I'm here.
When, when do you open?
Uh, we're, we're rebuilding the place now because I was, it was barbecue place. And it was efficient place for about five minutes, so.
Right.
Got it.
So you walk in, it'll feel like Italy now, so.
Oh.
You know, we're changing the floors, you know, painting and, you know, doing a lot of nice stuff, so.
I think you just answered my question.
So tomorrow, you're ready tomorrow?
Not that quick. We're getting it, a little bit of-
I'd like to drink some, move to approve.
Okay, uh, by trustee Barowski.
I was trying to figure out where it is.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor.
Company there, but you're saying they're not there anymore?
That's the old fish place.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know they closed.
Yeah, they closed, yeah.
There's a company top and then, and then you'll, we're pretty much, you know, that's what-
So is it front and back?
Yeah, we're taking both spots. So to correct what you were saying-
And I just want to add to it, the first place will be where the food is, and then we're taking the dining room so people can eat. So you can either eat there or take it to go, so we're designing both so like that.
And is the coffee and pastry all day?
All, all day, yeah. So the coffee in the morning, and patients are doing our own homemade donuts, homemade croissants, everything's made in-house.
Looks good.
And lunch and dinner will be, you know, pizza, pasta production. But you can get coffee and donuts all day long.
And are you open seven days or just five?
Probably going to close Monday.
Oh, six days.
So, so, six days, yeah. So hopefully everybody's cool enough to get the liquor license approved then. There was a patio there with Smoking Teas, but I guess it went out of business, we have to reapply.
Yeah, and that's the second item after this, so.
Appreciate it.
And we'll come back to that. So we have a motion by trustee Barowski, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Please, roll call, vote please.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now, to the next part of this, right, this, we don't really have the ability to do outdoor dining outside the, what is it, the B one district? So in order to quickly get this gentleman up and running, the creative way to do it was to do a pilot program while we give time to go through the planning and zoning process to potentially allow it in the future. So you have before you a resolution to do a pilot program for outdoor dining, food and beverage, right behind the building there where he's opening up. So I don't know if there's any questions.
I would note that there are a couple of dates that we highlighted in the, both the resolution and the exhibit, primarily the date through which the pilot program will run, we put through the end of the year. Again, if we're going to be looking at this as a more permanent amendment to the code, I think that's probably doable. And the other one is the hours of operation that would be authorized. You'll see this on page thirty-seven of fifty-two of the board packet. And again, we, I believe these are reflective of the resolution and pilot program that we had previously. I think we did this at the start of the pandemic or something like that. I think that these are the same, I believe those are the same ones, but that's what we had in our system. So if we changed it between what we sent to the village and what we, it wouldn't be, but I believe they are the same.
Well, they're not even going to be open past nine, right? Church.
Yeah, not that.
Eight AM to nine PM, I think you said?
Okay. So what about in the morning though, eleven AM?
Or the-
We open at eight AM.
Eight AM, so how do you handle?
You want to change, you want to change three, three A on the exhibit to eight AM to nine PM?
Are you okay with that, everyone? And the reason would be if you get a coffee and a croissant in the summer, you want to sit outside, right?
And actually, the patio is still there from the previous-
What'd you say?
Not today you don't.
Okay, the patio is actually still there from the previous user, so I'll go just to the last table to turn.
So absolutely supportive of having his patio open at eight. Now, does this extend other businesses?
That's as best my knowledge.
Neighbors might not want it at eight AM?
It could. I mean, the way we have this, and I suppose we can, um-
Maybe other businesses aren't open that early.
But the coffee shop.
I mean, there's, you know, I mean, there, there are other businesses in the B two that could potentially apply to the point that hasn't, and, um-
Who said could open for breakfast?
They're in B one, so they have no problem.
Oh, B two is-
Yeah, this is-
But, so think about B two though, so really, where is it? I mean, really, the only, the Long Grove Commons there would be the main area right now, right? There's nothing else.
The only B two.
Yeah. So, and then think of homes nearby, nothing's really close, right? So it's not really an issue.
Oh, so this only applies to that-
Correct, yes, yes.
Long Grove Com- oh, okay. I thought it was Village One.
Right.
Okay, then that's not an issue. There are no homes near there.
Right.
So again, the hours are eight to nine, to nine every day?
Eight AM to nine PM.
Well, whatever, I get seven. Thank you.
So is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So, I'll move.
Moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Yes.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
All right, welcome.
That's true.
Congratulations, thank you. Glad to have you.
I appreciate it.
Looking forward to getting some carryout there.
Yeah, definitely.
Do I need to apply for permanent variance though, long term? That's what you're saying?
There will be a need for the village zoning ordinance to be amended to give you the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
And you can certainly make the application for that, that request and a text amendment. That's typically how it goes, so.
So I can deal with Dana on that?
Yeah, we can, we can talk too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
All right, now, every year, we have a really long conversation about this item, consideration of recommend proposal for Oak Grove Drive and Chickamauga Lane. And I just saw this wonderful video by Lake County that put it on a bunch of roads. I've been driving through Gilmer Road every day on it up north. So that's what this is about. I don't know if I asked Jeff to provide some comments about, does it really work? We've been doing it.
Again?
We've been doing it for a number of years. The county is a great testament to, to how it works as well because they've got higher volume roads, yeah, it's working in Long Grove as well. The county applied their recommend and had press release last week, and the press release said that it extends the road five years. I remember trustee O'Connor talked to Glenn Petco with the county last year, and he said it's worth it to the county even if it extends the road by one year. It's, it's working and it's become more widespread and used in the counties.
I believe we talked about that last year. There was some rough back of envelope arithmetic during the meeting that if we gain even one year, that'll pay for it.
Is there a price increase per square yard from last year?
Actually, it went down.
Interesting.
When's the last time that?
Okay.
All right, so any discussion on this or reading? I know, I know.
And I did the research normally last year, called the head guy, said, hey, that uses-
Yep.
So the motion-
So move, so move, so move.
Is there a reason we're talking about this again? Like, I thought we were going to include it in the entire budget number and the approval for the entire road paving plan all at once. Why, why, why does the issue always keep getting?
I think because we don't get the numbers.
No, I think, wasn't it more along the lines of we had to put the bid package together?
Well, it runs, it runs two-step process. We got disconnected and in earnest to try to get the road program started so that way we could get Long Grove done before school started, we brought that to the board.
All right, I'll request to sit on the opposite side of the table away from Jeff next year when he brings his stuff.
So, so I have a motion by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Barowski. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye. All right, motion carried. The next one is consideration of an ordinance amending the village code regarding unnecessary noise. I don't know if you want to, maybe I can let you share a few words on why you put this this on the agenda?
Yeah, so we've received, um, numerous complaints about particularly golf courses operating their lawn maintenance equipment at very early hours, and our code does not currently address that specifically. So this amendment would, um, restrict the use of, like, gas-powered lawn maintenance equipment. They would be allowed from seven A.M. to seven P.M., um, Monday through Friday, and then eight A.M. to seven P.M. on Saturdays and Sundays.
And not just gas-powered?
Any motorized.
Any motorized?
Yeah.
Is this a new problem?
No, no, it's every year.
So if golfers, I don't golf, but I, I understand that there are early tee times. Aren't they, the people who own the courses trying to get everything done before the golfers get there?
Yes. Unfortunately, people live next to the golf courses and don't like being woken up at five A.M.
That's kind of a, I mean, it just occurred to me, I, when I read this, I thought, well, yeah, that's reasonable. And then I thought, well, wait a minute, you know, their, their customers get there at six o'clock in the morning, is that right?
Uh, usually, the early tee times are like seven-ish.
Well, during, the problem is that daylight's really, um, the days are really long right now, and if it's five o'clock in the morning, you can go out and play golf at five-thirty, so that's the problem this time of year.
Sort of being unreasonable with them?
I don't know, I mean, I get, um, I get a text, um, every time somebody cuts the lawn at five in the morning, I get a video of the tractor in the person's yard. So, and I usually get it about a little bit after five o'clock, maybe five-thirty.
Isn't, isn't that like, if you come to this town and you live near the downtown, you know you're gonna hear festival music? Isn't it sort of the same thing?
I mean, it could be. I guess the question is what's reasonable, what's a reasonable time to start, right? And our, but we do say, right, what, we, we just never were that specific, right? We...
This is consistent with our construction noise limitation.
Okay.
We just haven't incorporated the, uh, the lawn equipment as part of that, but, um, you know, right now, your neighbor couldn't start having somebody saw wood on their property until seven o'clock.
Or more.
Uh, maybe. But the lawn equipment could, uh, could be going before then. The noises, one could argue, are fairly similar, especially for those who might be trying to lumber, and so, um, the, the notion was any kind of motorized equipment that is being used for work, um, of whatever kind, needs to be, uh, limited to those hours.
And generally, is...
May I ask you, is this based on the noise level, or is this based on the neighbors, you know, trying to...
It's, it's simply a time limit, when motorized equipment can be used.
So does this affect sound-wise and impact on health or otherwise, the conflict between the neighbors? But this ordinance doesn't mention anything about the health, these are the sound level impacting the health per se legally, you know?
But there are...
I understand that, you know, the...
Yeah, the Illinois, the Illinois Push Control Board establishes limits as far as decibels go for, uh, equipment and the like. The village can independently establish these types of regulations, but the, uh, the requirements and limitations on, uh, on quantitative sound levels are things that the Push Control Board has jurisdiction over.
Is this something that's...
I, I think that many communities have similar rights.
I have a recommendation, though. I don't think on the weekends, it should be seven A.M. every day of the week, but that's just me, so, um, I know I'm up by seven A.M., if not, a lot earlier, every day of the week, no matter how late I stay up. Doesn't matter, I'm up.
I think that the recommendation, the draft ordinance has a different time than in the, uh, recommendation that you'll find on page, is it forty of the packet?
Yeah.
Uh, Chris, Chris had suggested seven to seven on weekdays and eight to seven on weekends.
So in the summer, when they're out there athletically, everybody's windows and doors are closed because they've got the...
Well, so the other thing is it's more than that, too, so the, they have these really big leaf blowers.
Those are a problem.
So then the fall, you have that problem, too, and so they try to get out there and they go, "Rrrr," and I get pictures, I have pictures of those, too, if you wanna see those, I know what they look like.
It's, so, so we just ban noise completely, or like in California, they, they legislate how loud the leaf blowers can be?
Yeah.
Well, Illinois does, too, if not the noise. That's something that the state had regulations on.
Okay.
But what we're saying is some, what this would do, if you adopt it, would be to say, you can use them, always subject to what the state regulations are, but you can only use them during the specified hours.
I understand.
What, I mean, if you moved it at seven A.M. on, every day of the week, is that okay with everyone, or? I, I think about Saturdays, especially, I mean, Sunday could be different, but Saturdays, those are busy golf days, and so are Sundays, right? So...
So is the issue mainly the golf course issue, or is it residential in general? I guess, just trying to sort of dig a little deeper, expand on Rita's question a little bit. Is it really mostly golf courses we're talking about here?
Well, we've had issues in the downtown, too, um, where the grass was cut really early, too. That residence moving out of the village, may have moved out already.
Okay, I, I like your point about seven A.M. I don't know why we wanna differentiate between day of the week, because everybody's schedules are so different anyway. You know, people who go to church, they don't go to church, they go on Saturday, or they go on Sunday, or whatever, right? So I don't know why we differentiate the day of the week, you know? So I like the idea of seven in the morning. I don't like the idea of seven P.M., because seven P.M. in the middle of summer is not that late. Um, you know, emergent, stuff happens. Um, you know, I've been out of town, I come home, there's literally a tree hanging across my driveway, laying there, and you gotta get the chainsaw out, you can't get up your driveway. So what do you do? I mean, I can't call Chris unless Chris is on call twenty-four hours a day to give me special approval, right? So, you know, nine o'clock to me might be the limit, eight o'clock might be somewhere better, but I think seven o'clock is just too early. It's bright sunshine out at seven o'clock in the middle of summer, and frankly, stuff happens. And, you know, again, I, I live on three and a half acres, which is very different than a postage stamp quarter acre lot, and man, my tree maintenance is just really, really, really a challenge for me. Like, just this week, another two ten-inch branches down, so what do you do? You gotta cut it up. Middle of winter, same thing. We had, we had two trees come down in the middle of Wyndham Lane this year, and they don't happen at, you know, at seven o'clock, or at twelve o'clock, they happen when the storm's blowing at night, kinda thing, and you're out there cutting. So I don't wanna violate the law, but yet, um, but yet, that would be to clear, just to clear the road, or to clear a branch, and I think people's schedules do vary so much, it's really difficult.
But these are lawn maintenance equipment, 'cause it talks about leaf and grass blowers, landscape trimmers, mulchers, aerators.
And I think it's...
Any kind of mechanical noises.
Any kind of mechanical noises.
That's a little broad.
I, I have cut my grass, uh, from...
There is an exception for...
No, with the lawnmower, all the lights on.
Like a tree coming down.
The side, the tree comes down, I gotta pull my lawnmower out to go drag it. I mean, that's what we do, we drag them with the lawnmowers, with tractors.
I'm saying there's an exception for that.
Well, the issue really wasn't at night, it was in the morning. So we haven't had any complaints at night, just so you know.
Man, would you be okay pushing that seven o'clock back to like eight, or something like that?
Seven A.M., eight P.M., seven days a week, I'd be fine with it.
Something like that, 'cause seven's just too early. And I'm glad you guys agreed to do something different, or hopefully agree to do something different on Sundays, because that time slot of ten to five is in the middle of a freaking Bears game, or in the middle of the summer heat, right? So hey, go cut your three acres in the middle of the heat, go do it, enjoy it, which is what we have to do. Um, and it takes me about three and a half hours to cut my grass.
I would even push it to nine o'clock, isn't it?
With a nine, nine miles per hour, zero-turn radius mower. So that would be like middle of the day, middle of the heat, right? That's why you start early.
And this would be complaint-driven, so it's only giving us authority to, you know, enforce a violation if a complaint is received.
Is eight o'clock better, or is it nine o'clock better? At night?
I'm okay with eight. I mean, nine o'clock's starting to push it.
It's already dark at nine.
Sometimes.
Except for like three weeks, I mean, June and July.
You can still cut your grass in the dark.
Well, yeah, the tree that came down, if, or the, the tree guys were out there...
I have, so...
Still ten...
Yeah, headlights, by the way, you could put a headlight on your lawnmower.
Center.
Oh, worry about it. All right, eight o'clock it is, so, anyone, uh, nope?
Seven, eight?
Seven, eight, yeah.
Seven days.
Eight to eight, or seven to seven?
No, seven, eight, seven in the morning, 'cause, uh, if you're a golfer, um, you, tee times start early, so...
The equipment's gotta get ahead of the first golfer, that's the way the game plays.
So, and, and the idea here is to have a little bit of teeth when trying to get them to not start at five in the morning, or four-thirty, or whatever they're doing, crazy times, so...
So does the, it should have time limit on the lawnmower? It should, it should have their set of rules.
The, the clubship? The club?
For the lawnmowers to come into their neighborhood. Do they have any such rules?
Oh, uh, it's, uh, in the neighborhoods, um, no, what, I don't know, we may have covenants, I don't, I can't remember what's in our covenant, so, yeah.
The other, last thing I thought about reading through this, um, was the implementation timing. You know, if I'm a resident and I've got a landscaper contract, I know my kitty-corner neighbors, seven o'clock Monday morning, without a doubt, there're landscapers out there. And I know that because I don't normally get up there, sometimes I force to, because they're out there cutting their grass, you know? Um, so I think we need to give residents and, um, residents and stakeholders some time to prepare for this, so that their landscaping crew maybe can reschedule. I don't think it's as simple as, you know, just call them up and all of a sudden, Long Grove says they can't do it anymore, you know? They've gotta reschedule, so...
What happens if somebody violates the law?
Well, as, as Chris mentioned, these are typically complaint-driven, and apropos your concern, Chris, I think that what is not unusual is when you, uh, when you enact something like this for the first month or two, there are more, you know, notices given, you know, you can't start until seven o'clock, we just passed an ordinance, see if you can adjust your schedule, and if there's, you know, if someone's been told a couple of times, and then they still do it, maybe that's when you actually ticket them. But that's a more common way of rolling these out, rather than having a specific date that this won't be effective until such and such, because then you're still gonna have the same issue. So usually, uh, in other communities, they have adopted regulations like this effective immediately, but then in the enforcement of it, there are, uh, it's a softer touch, until people have been given the notice or have been told multiple times.
Yeah, we give, we give several notices before finer adjudication would come into play.
Got it.
Three notices.
Does, does this mirror the, the, um, mulching machinery that we dealt with in the last...
I think that was the size of the mulch piles, but...
I mean, it, it's...
Yeah, what we, what we said in the mulching related to the, you know, how big they could be, and we gave them a time period within which to reduce any sizes that were in excess of those, I can't remember what the dimensions were. We created dimensional limitations on mulching, um, more so than, uh, temporal limitations.
So you want, so, um, okay, I think everyone's okay with seven in the morning to eight, seven days a week, and then, um, the, um, a, a time period where this goes into effect is what you wanted to ask?
I don't need to.
I, I think that might be better done as an implementation matter, rather than a legislative...
Okay, okay.
And we can put stuff out on our website.
Yeah, let's publish it, and let people know what we're doing, and then give them...
So, so, somebody wanna make a motion to approve that?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
So move.
Moved by Trustee Tanucci.
All right, I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Barowski. Um, I guess we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, um, time for the engineers' report?
Okay, village engineer's report, uh, we'll start with the village hall expansion project. Uh, we've got the permit for the septic system, and there's a load of gravel out there, the contractor's ready to start. Didn't get a whole lot of work done today, so we're running time, so, uh, we plan to be out here tomorrow, um, first, uh, in four hundred and eleven, and it'll be done by early next week, so we're seeing here, doing their thing, um, and talking with, uh, Mayor Sparsen about, uh, getting started, because, uh, building review is still under renewal, so, something, so we're figuring to start. But foundation only, something like that, I'm sure we've worked out. Uh, the road maintenance program, the actual, uh, redating of the roads by builders, uh, paving, uh, contracts have executed, we've got a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, and I'll know more about the schedule. As I mentioned earlier, the work in Long Grove has to be done by the end of August, which is actually off.
Can we go back to number one for a moment?
Sure.
Sorry. So what, what's the schedule of the forest lab? When are, when are we pouring?
I don't know.
Oh, who does?
Uh, Bear Construction will be able to provide that at our next OHC meeting.
OHC?
I don't know what it stands for. Is there a bi-weekly meeting with...
Uh,些建筑设计师 coordination.
I see, thank you.
些建筑设计师 contractor?
Well, so we would, I mean, I think we'd all like to see a plan now.
Yeah, I think...
Like, so we kinda know what it's gonna be.
Get the schedule, and I was thinking about that earlier today, I think that's why they had not published one, or gave us one, is because they didn't know when the start date was gonna be.
Thank you.
And, um, building number seven, this is the speed tables, uh, maybe spelling those unchecked roads, that's scheduled before tomorrow, actually. Um, moving down Arlington Heights Road.
Take that one, resident?
Lot of, uh, work in construction, that's happened already there. Temporary pavements are up, Buffalo Road's still thinking about what they're gonna do with their water main, however, uh, the county is, uh, moving forward with the project in what's called their pre-stage one, which, you know, if you've driven by, you've got one lane in each direction, and you're gonna start with three moving beans, and the light and put some temporary pavement on there. Um, Attic Kissing Road ongoing, everything's going well there. Uh, the landscape enhancement plans for Route Twenty-Two, this is, uh, number eleven.
Those are, what, have you noticed the status of the progress?
They closed on the property. Their, um, architects, I was with them last week, I actually have a piece to go out today. So, yeah, they're moving on the process right now.
Okay, so still no hope of being able to put pipes in under Attic Kissing?
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. They're ready when we are.
Okay.
Uh, so number eleven, and this is the Route Twenty-Two widening project, the landscape enhancement plans have been, um, completed, distributed, um, got various comments from various people, so those all, um, incorporated. Uh, the last set of comments that we're gonna get is from the village forester, so...
Did Nat Berger respond?
Yes.
Okay. That was her, I didn't see what she said, did she say anything?
Uh, a few species, uh, comments, um, one had to do with the not surviving in alkaline soils, so I'm just gonna be excited.
Were those dogwoods, by any chance?
No, white swan books, I think.
Oh, white swan books, yeah, yeah, okay. Hmm, interesting, okay.
I know the common name, but don't ask me for the, uh...
Yeah.
Latin name.
I won't.
The pinheads, I thought, were the hard ones, but...
Is it possible to get a legible copy of the plans? I still can't read this. It's, 'cause I think it's a copy of a copy.
It's just, it's like the, well, the layers of the PDF, and if you try and open it up, it takes a long time, too.
Yeah, it's not legible, even with a, a magnifying glass.
Yeah, maybe we can share them a different way or something, I don't know, so...
I know it's, I know it's a lot, get it?
Mm-hmm.
Just...
Sure. Okay, um, miscellaneous things, um, I was out at, at the farms last week, and the, uh, landscaping contractor has removed some bug corn and, uh, reestablished the drainage well. Heard that the farmer was going to mow the burn, uh, this week, and next is the, uh, Osage Road, you know, uh, Jim, Ben has been here asking about the eight-inch restrictor pipe, pipe to further restrict water from going into the residential, uh, backyards. That was installed last week, uh, went out there today during the rain events, working beautifully, no water in the side yard.
I'm so glad, because, uh, Monaline reported five inches of rain...
No.
On Saturday.
No.
And that had to be right there, and there was not one complaint. And that had to be right there and there was not one complaint. So imagine if it was the way it was prior.
That came quickly.
Right there.
That came over the course of about ninety minutes.
Yeah, five inches.
Since you mentioned the name, I did make sure the septic contractor's gonna fill the tank with water.
Oh, geez, thank you.
And then just the last thing was the electronic speed radar sign, the staff's working on, you know, the plan of where to schedule. With that, there's a certain permit updates, I'm gonna go through those. If there's any questions, happy to chat.
I do. I sent an email yesterday to you and to Chris regarding the pylons. We've got some power U-turners who are making a sharp U-turn around the right turn island, cutting in front of the first pylon, actually going into Route eighty-three a little bit and then backing up.
Are you kidding?
So I proposed two or three, preferably three, new pylons, one additional one in front of the first, if that's something you can do, if it's not too close to eighty-three. But at a minimum, two pylons, and I sent a drawing, did you see it? Two pylons on the white line just past the right turn island and that would block anybody from trying to do that.
Yeah, I apologize. Mayor Sparsen and I talked about that this morning and he said, give me the authorization, so that's already been.
Oh, good.
So they can order them and put those out.
Thank you. Two or three? Okay, so we can do three. It is.
It's like even more dangerous than.
Mini Cooper.
I saw a BMW three series do it. It's not a big car, but it's not a tiny car.
In the report.
All right, thank you for that report. Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, we'll move to the village president trustee reports. Let me think about how I want to do this. So two meetings last week, one with the historical society. I was really not planning to talk about it tonight. I sent you their summary, it has to do with ownership and how do they get the repairs done. I would like to work with that a little bit and then bring it back to the board in a form where we can decide to do something, right? But the way it's laid out there right now, if you read it, I don't, I don't think there's anything to discuss yet. So are you okay with that and that? And then the second one is, was it, I thought it was a lot longer, but it turns out it was only an hour and a half meeting. We, Chris and I attended the HDL GBA meeting on Wednesday of last week where they discussed the potential of eliminating the SSA. It was driven by some property owners. It changed to, during the meeting, suspending the SSA for a year because they believe they have, some people believe they have enough money to operate. The way this is concluding is, is that they as an organization need to decide what to do. And, you know, this year, the decision to levy the tax has already been done, so, you know, and they have to use the money for the reasons stated in our agreement with them. But next year, if they choose to do something different, they can. So the discussions are ongoing, but, you know, we're gonna, I was just asked to provide them with a copy of our agreement with the HDL GBA. But we, you know, we're not gonna get in the middle of it right now at this point in time, but there may be something coming back at us depending on how this goes, so. But there's some property owners that are pushing to do something different, so.
Isn't that where the money for the festivals come from?
Yeah, yeah. The money for the festivals or the money for the visitors, the person that's in the visitor house. Yeah, for tourism, yeah. So that's what it's all about. The thinking was that they may be at a point where they have enough money in the kitty that they don't need to assess as much of a tax. We, some of the, some of the property owners are thinking that. That may not be the opinion of the HDL GBA board. So they as an organization have to work this out and they'll have an opportunity if they want to make any changes when they bring before us in the fall the tax levy. Thank you if there's anything I missed there.
No, I think that's the full coverage of it.
Yeah, so that's that, so. Lots of chatter going on, so we'll see where that goes. But again, we're pushing it back to them, so.
On a, on a related issue, three letter tax word. We have talked about monitoring the cash sales at festivals somehow. Is there, we used to have no cash and it was all by ticket. Then it switched over to cash, cash, and I don't think our revenue.
It's credit card now.
That's easy.
No, so they, so.
Well, for credit card, we would get the tax.
Yeah, we still, I think there, I think, so that's something that when Ryan's in here the next time, talk about the way they're doing it now, they actually have the ability to track it because they're doing it via credit card. So the cash sales are, you know, I think there's some off to the side somewhere, but I mean, for the most part, the main stuff is done via credit card. So, and that's to get at the sales tax issue. So I think they're working on it.
Do we notice a difference when, with the cards versus?
I don't know, the Chocolate Fest would just happen, it was the first one. We did a Strawberry Fest, I don't even know if we see the tax receipts yet.
Like three or four months in every year.
I would think so.
Yeah. So, you know, so. But it'd be interesting to see how that works out, but that's a change, right? So, and they, they see that the actual revenue that they're getting now is even greater because they'll spend more on a credit card than.
Sure, because it's not money.
It's just like the iPass, I guess, but, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Red in my mind, you know, it's not a tax.
Right, go there, that's, hold on. All right, that's ended my report. Trustee Borowski?
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, trustee Jamil? Any report? No? Uh, let's see, trustee O'Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
You may have already know this or read it in the paper, but we got the, we, for the corridor, the green corridor, I'm calling it now, not the old three thing anymore, got the approval, got the money, a million dollars from the state of Illinois to have ID and R run a, an analysis and a study of the corridor land that IDOT has purchased over the years just to see inventory, really, is what it's about. And there was something in the news just this past week where there is a big drive to, to, it was on the front page of Daily Herald, Barbara Clip and Chris, I guess we were on there. Then the purpose of this whole thing is to get people out of their cars and the people who want to walk and who want to bike and maybe even equestrian trails. I don't know how it'll turn out. But we therefore should be, could be thinking about as far as our pathways are concerned, making, making it a safe pathway for, because they, this could go all the way into the city of Chicago, up north and come all the way back with this land that looks out the way we've been working thirty-five years for it to work out. So we, we should, we can get people to the soccer field easily from the forest preserve, but to get from there to the next hookup is, how would we do that safely? Well, to make it safe for people. So maybe that's something we can brainstorm, you know? I don't think, I don't think it involves necessarily buying property, maybe getting easements.
Here's a whole other fun, here's all another fun thing. So at some point in time, you need to decide what to do with the space work.
Yes.
And so there might be parcels of property that we should buy.
Right.
We have money to do.
Yes.
Think about that.
Every year, Greg, Greg passed it out the last two years, there's a document that comes in from the state of, you know, like two blocks here have been abandoned or they're not owned and you can buy them for thirty-five dollars.
And parcels that are.
Yes, that they aren't, they just aren't owned. And there aren't enough of them thus far to create a seamless trail, you know?
Yeah.
What are you gonna do with two blocks in Marden?
One of them came with it, one of them was in Bobby's subdivision and came with a pretty big obligation.
Yes.
That's, we don't want that.
No, no, and, and, yeah, and I.
That's why, that's why it's abandoned.
And I drove up there. Somebody already bought it.
Do they buy it? Well.
Somebody.
I don't know if they did the right thing.
I drove up there, clearing the land. I drove up there, I'm like, oh my God, this is incredible, I could want to.
Better check that out if they're allowed there.
And there was a guy out there clearing the property and I think, whatever. But it's something for us to have on the radar.
Yeah.
Because that would be, that would be terrific, you know, for people to not, the little kids as well as the adults to just not have to get in cars and go to Johnny's house or, you know, pedal over to the ice cream place that's gonna be opening.
Be happy to hear this, having to go buy a new golf cart because mine got smashed.
Forbid it.
I know, but it's, it was, I didn't pay much for it. There's, it's amazing now, the types of electric vehicles they have that I believe some of these could ride on trails, right? They're for families.
Yeah, right.
And they'll go some distant, some decent mileage, too. So, and they're not a Tesla, they're expensive golf carts, so.
Yeah, right.
So keep that in mind when you're planning these things because that would.
Then we have to make the trails wider or.
They'll fit, they'll fit on.
And then.
Yeah, there you go. I don't know, but think about it because it is amazing. For somebody that lives seven miles north, I can ride my bike, but my family might not.
Sure.
But taking a golf cart, that would be kind of fun, so.
It would be.
Yeah.
So we have twelve foot trails.
I don't know. Well, when the county built them, they'll be really wide, right, so.
Not, not for pedestrians, you know, like on the lakefront where people, there's a lane for bikers and a lane for pedestrians and they can't, they just can't seem to keep it straight. It could be a nightmare. Whatever.
Well, thank you for your report.
Worry about it only if we have the time.
Anything else?
If we have the money. It's not part of my report because it's not my department, but I don't know where else we'd bring it up. We have money in the budget for the rebranding that we talked about. Can we decide who, when and how to get that started?
I guess that's, I don't know who should own that, right? So is that.
I don't either.
And Ann was behind it, right?
They have a marketing background.
Yeah. Well, can we bring that up in the next meeting when Ann's back and, yeah, figure that out.
That's all. End of my report.
Trustee Tanucci?
No report.
Uh, village manager's report? No report. All right, if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
So moved.